I'd like to call this committee of the whole meeting for May fifteenth, twenty twenty five to order. With adoption of the agenda as amended, I'm going to move item ten C to ten A. So that we can get the value of Staff Sergeant Dodd's report first. So someone want to make that motion, Counselor Palmer, Counselor Devlin, all in favor? Motion's carried. Adoption of the minutes of the Committee of the Whole for April tenth. Counselor Devlin, Counselor Cherry, all in favor? Motion's carried. Any business arising from those Committee of the Whole minutes? Seeing none, I will now go on to announcements from the mayor. Mr. Parliament, you're up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we've got to be thinking of our poor staff person, Mr. Paul Simon today. So there's a program with Tours and Revelstoke called Thanksgiving Back. And so it's giving back to the volunteers that make up our community. But Paul gave me this bag about two months ago and he said something to the effect that your team sucks and my team's better. And congratulations. So I want to give this back to him, in the spirit of Thanksgiving back. So Paul's had a rough night, they're down three, two. So I talked to the city manager of Grand Forks. He says he would gladly donate this jersey, because I know you're looking for a new jersey. So we have that for you. We have a box of Kleenex for you. Okay, Paul? The chicken wings the other night, Toms. We got some Prozac. Got some Zimbalta. And the red light behind the net, sunburn protection. There's a lot of that. You're sore, you're sore behind. We got some bum wax for you. This is to clean up the mess last night. This is a garbage bag for you. And if you put this on your desk, there will be a game seven. Okay, so I'm going to give this to you, because this is all about Thanksgiving back, Paul. On behalf of all the staff and all the support that we offer you and your poor leafs, please accept this as our both condolences and our support. There will be a game seven. Thanksgiving back.
I don't know what the value is if I'm allowed to accept gifts.
Yes, you are not elected.
To share with.
You are not elected, you're allowed to accept that. All right, you're welcome.
Yeah, that's what I'm doing here, at least. We're going to move on to, thanks for that, Mr. Palmer. Move on to delegations and presentations. Mr. Kotay, you're here to make a presentation to, or a delegation to council. If you'd like to come forward to podium, please. And start by giving us your name and address and go ahead.
Well, thanks for having me. I'm Matt Kotay, lived in Revelstoke for about nine years. I live at trailer number two, three eighteen Humbert, in the Hideaway Trailer Park. Does that work?
That works.
Okay. I'm led to believe that you've already seen the various things that I've emailed, so. I'm just going to dive right into, it's going to sound scripted, because it is a script for efficiency. And then it'll be quick. So I'm just going to dive into it. And you've already read a version of this, but just for the record and whatnot. So as you've read in the letters I've sent, the current provincial protections for people who live in trailer parks fall short. And what I'm here about today is I think the city's redevelopment policy for trailer parks, well intended though it is, has some unintended perverse incentives in it. So I'm just going to present a scenario here. Let's say you are a trailer park owner and you want to redevelop it. But getting everybody out of it all at once for like a blanket redevelopment doesn't seem likely. If by attrition, you slowly empty pads by evicting people over technicalities, or you exploit, say, a mortgage loophole to make it impossible for people to buy in, and it create a scenario where people can only leave the park and not enter it, then by the time you stratify it, you will probably own half the lots yourself and they'll be empty. And at that point, council will never have had a sense of how those lots became empty in the first place. So I just want to be clear that I think in building mixed density and site-built homes into trailer parks is fine in principle, and that giving lot owners that option is great. But we're missing that that creates an incentive to displace people in the interim. So I'm just going to give you the example of my situation. So if my park were to be stratified, here's what would happen to me. Right now, it costs me about fifteen hundred dollars a month to live in a two-bedroom, two-bathroom detached home built in two thousand and seven, with a yard, a garden, a small workshop and storage. And I have a bit of equity, which is pretty amazing in this town. None of the affordable housing options being built or proposed to be built will come close to the situation that I'm in. And if I'm displaced, it'll cost me about double for about half as much living space as I have now, in the best case scenario. The same is true to my costs if the park is stratified. Let's say I go and I buy my land, or the lot that I'm on, sorry, the pad. If it was stratified and I bought the pad, it would also cost me about double what it costs to live right now. My property taxes would double, my mortgage would double, my pad fees would likely be replaced with strata fees that are about equal. And it would cost me twice as much to be there. At the end of the road, I'd have a little bit more equity, but I wouldn't have the cash flow to support it in the meantime, and I would have to sell it and move on to I don't know what. So trailer parks are an important intermediary housing option we should not get rid of. I know that they're not ideal density, but neither are heritage houses. We don't have to densify the entire town. And I think it's a bit paternalistic to take options away and corner people into housing options that the development department finds the most virtuosic and are yet to be realized. The city's redevelopment policy, according to Paul Simon, who was gracious enough to meet with me, I think a couple of months ago, seeks to address the problem, housing precarity for trailer park residents who don't own their land, by promoting the long-term redevelopment of trailer parks into land ownership scenarios like Johnson Heights, where over time you get site-built homes taking over, and in some cases, higher density. But you also get six hundred thousand dollar trailers in that situation, double the average cost for one on a rental pad. When I spoke with Mr. Simon, he cited fire hazard and housing insecurity from not owning the land as the reasons the city supports the redevelopment of trailer parks. But gaps in policy are the only thing that make a lease situation precarious, and we can fix those. And there's another option here that isn't mentioned in the redevelopment policy, which is that trailer parks not be converted to strata, but to non-market housing that we seek to help co-ops, housing societies, or maybe even cities buy up the parks instead of developers. As far as fire hazard, a two thousand and thirteen study by the U.S. National Fire Protection Association found that trailers built after nineteen seventy-six have the same fire risk as site-built homes, or even less. So if you replace old trailers with new trailers, we're doing okay. And what's more, we're getting pretty close to some of the federal and provincial incentives that are trying to boost housing by scaling up approvals for pre-built homes that can be quickly installed. That describes trailers. I live in a trailer park. I know that historically they're grody and don't have the most upstanding citizens in them. But it doesn't have to be that way. There are some great trailer parks in town. Glacier Heights is a really nice, clean, kept trailer park. It's a perfect example. And I worry that stigma is part of the policy here and that it shouldn't limit the future. When I met with the development department, they told me Revelstoke's redevelopment policy for trailer parks is unique because it's innovative. I think it's unique because it's an outlier and was written with zero outside consultation. So my two asks are that the policy be updated with compensation guidelines, just like the city of Colona is in the midst of doing right now, and are also clearly outlined in Langley and City of Langley and City of Mission's recent policies. I also asked that the policy wording in the redevelopment policy not state that the city outright supports redevelopment as a preset position, as it's currently written. I think that's a case-by-case situation for council to establish. And I ask for council's support petitioning the provincial government to update the Manufactured Home Park Tenancy Acts, Act to fix the mortgage loophole, which is too complicated to explain here, but I think you're all familiar with. That should have been somewhere in the area of five minutes.
That's good. One question and I'll go to council. So you were talking about compensation. What do you think about that?
So right now, the Manufactured Home Park Act says that if you are asked to leave the park, you have to be compensated to the maximum of twenty thousand dollars to move your trailer, if it's movable. If you are able to argue that it's not movable, you have to be, you can go to the residential tenancy branch and argue to be bought out at assessed value. However, if your home is worth more than sixty-five thousand dollars, whichever trailer in this town is, you then have to go to the Supreme Court to ask for that. So none of those protections are automatic. And at the provincial level, there are a lot of loopholes. So I provided, I can re-mail this stuff. I provided a number of examples of city policies that bake that into the local protections, so that you don't have to go to court.
Okay, good, thanks for that. Any other comments from council?
Counselor Palmer? Thank you, thank you, Matt, for the presentation and explaining. You cited, I'm not sure if there are policies or policies in work with Colona and Langley. Are they done?
The Colonas is being updated. They just put the minutes up last week with their ask to their development staff to update it with what they want on there. I can forward you that. Langley's is done, Mission's is done, yeah.
And then through the mayor. So from your lens, are they good policies or are they?
I think so. I mean, you know, I'm a layperson, but I'm a journalist by trade and I, you know, make part of my living understanding complicated things. And those other policies are much simpler, much easier to understand than ours. And I understand that you're trying to do something groundbreaking with ours, but my opinion is that comparing it back-to-back to those other ones, that ours is overly complicated and very difficult to understand.
Great, okay. Next.
Any other comments from counsel? Counselor Oliver?
Yeah, Matt. Thanks for giving the presentation. Just so council has an awareness, because I've had an opportunity to speak with several people who've been affected by this. Can you explain sort of a little bit more in detail what is happening to individuals? Like what the pathway is and what the outcome is? Or if something that you would like to ameliorate by making this change?
Well, on a local level, I'm really just asking to shore up what the provincial protections and make them easier to access for people. There's not a ton that the city can do to change, you know, market forces and that type of thing. But essentially, right now, there are a number of sort of tricky ways that landlords who want to redevelop their parks can go about it. One of them is a mortgage loophole that's emerged where you can not help potential buyers get mortgages by signing the mortgage form that's not legally required. There's also a provincial form that assigns the pad tenancy to the next person who's purchasing. That one, park owners are legally obliged to sign. But if they don't, or they deny signature, it takes up to three months to argue it with the residential tenancy branch. And that can, you know, that will just scare off buyer after buyer after buyer. So essentially, there are these sort of nefarious ways that you can depreciate home values and start to clear people out of parks if, in the long run, your goal is to redevelop it. You can also do things like start trying to evict tenants over small infractions of rules and technicalities, which I've seen and I won't say where, but I've seen. Things like not totally correctly filling out rental application. And then you rent out your trailer and then the owner gets wind of it and finds an excuse to evict you. And when you evict a tenant in a trailer park, you evict the trailer at their expense. So yeah, I described it as kind of a attrition situation, and that's sort of what it is. It's a long-term scenario where you try to vacate the land so that by the time it's either stratified or rezoned, it's available to you to build on. And in the meantime, tenants are displaced through sort of pretty nasty tactics.
Anyone else? Counselor Richard?
Thanks for us. I'd like to see Director Simon here to comment on our protections and redevelopment policy in conversation we've been in for today. Kind of passing the mic here to see if you want to add anything. If there's any misunderstandings or if there's anything that's more we could do. What is your opinion?
Through your worship, Counselor Cherry, the only comment I would have is our policy seeks to not displace people. It seeks to allow them to get into the market in Revelstoke. All the other policies, including Langley, including Mission, they work under the premise that everyone will be displaced and they're going to get right of first refusal and they get a little bit of extra compensation for that. Ours is seeking to do the exact opposite of that, to keep people living within the manufactured home park and to give them zoning that allows them to not only put a manufactured home on there, single Y, double Y, whatever they choose, but also allows them to put a single-family home with a suite or a duplex or a triplex on there if they ever do choose to develop with something different, so that they wouldn't be required to only have manufactured homes. And that's where that long-term thoughtful transition reference in the policy comes from. And we are more than happy within the Development Services Department if manufactured home parks are retained as such. But there's a reason why you don't see new manufactured home parks being developed right now. They are not a viable option for modern development within communities. And that's why you're seeing stratas, condos, et cetera, that are coming online. So again, our policy is different, most certainly, but we aren't working under the premise that people are automatically going to be displaced, which all the other policies we've reviewed aren't working under that premise.
You are, with respect, you are, however, working under the premise that existing tenants would have the financial means to purchase their lots, because what you're describing is an ownership scenario and not a lease scenario any longer. The redevelopment is to an ownership scheme, right?
That was my next question.
Let's let, and so what I'm not going to allow is you to go back and forth in the one.
Okay.
He's answering a counselor's question. I want to hear what he has to say if that counselor wants to readdress you, don't do that.
My apologies.
If I can to the chair, that was going to be my next question is how?
And through your worship, Counselor Cherry, if we do see an application to stratify a mobile home park and individuals are not able to purchase the land, we are not going to be supporting a rezoning application if it means that anyone who's going to be leasing the land is going to see their rates go up three hundred percent. That will be part of the rezoning application consideration. If we have a situation, let's say, where fifty percent of people are able to purchase the land, they can make it work, another fifty percent can't, we're going to want to understand, okay, what are their rates going to be compared to what they are right now after stratification when they're leasing? And we haven't had anyone formally go through the process yet in terms of an application being submitted, but we did have a pre-application meeting with one of the manufactured home park owners in the last couple of weeks. And they've already been exploring alternative financing options and trying to figure out ways with alternative financing options for that exact scenario, where people would be able to stay leasing their land, given very favorable rates. And one thing to make really clear, that is all going to be subject to council approval through the rezoning process. And if council is not satisfied, that individuals aren't going to be protected, that there is no obligation to support the rezoning. And when we did the policy, we had a very frank conversation with council that we are knowingly foregoing additional density within the manufactured home parks in an effort to try and minimize any displacement of existing residents in there. Every other policy we've come across is the opposite. It works under the premise that everyone is going to be displaced, give them right of first refusal, and instead of having density at ten units per hectare, you're going to have it at a thousand units per hectare with new development coming in. We forewent that additional density in these areas, because we also agree with Mr. Kotay that we don't need to densify everywhere in the city if it means displacement of existing residents. Hence why the policy is drafted the way that it is.
Paul, counsel?
No, that's exactly why I supported the policy that came forward.
Counselor Palmer, do you have another comment?
Yeah, the, I'll just sort of reiterate some of that, because that was my memory. I was thinking, okay, our intention, my memory of our intention was actually to protect housing, recognizing that we had more affordable housing. Recognizing we had limited authority to do that. One of the things that I guess the chair to council, you know, is the unintended consequences. And it's a big problem generally, so for housing, you know, a couple of other examples, how we're potentially hurting more affordable existing homes is, so Steco, for example. You know, it's very, very cost prohibitive to build a place. Recent provincial mandate are embracing that, I suppose, ability to have multiple units on what used to be R1. You can only have one unit. Now, if you have an older home that is arguably affordable, the development thing is to actually trash those homes and create more density, but then the cost is enormous. So those are some of the, I guess, the challenges. I'm appreciative about it, because I think our overall intention was actually to help protect, recognizing, we recognized it was minimal at the time, but protect the rights of those that were potentially displacing them another option. But I think we also knew at the time, you know, that the price of buying into a strata could be prohibitive for someone that's in that kind of a housing situation. So it's a difficult thing, but I think it's something to take a look at, those policies and if there's specific unintended consequences. I'm not sure if they really exist or not, but yeah, so thank you.
Any other comments from council? Counselor Devlin and counsel.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, the chair, sorry. Thank you for the presentation. Informative to see it from a perspective, absolutely. Yeah, I can just echo what other counselors have said. Our goal when we were crafting this was certainly not to, was certainly not to push for the redevelopment of manufactured home parks. It was to protect manufactured home parks as a viable option. Our hands are somewhat limited in the policies we can craft, as we can't overrule provincial regulations, obviously. We can, we can work in tandem with them to a degree. We can rule them. I do agree with your other point that hasn't really been addressed, that there's obviously a glaring hole in the Residential Tenancy Act on a provincial level. And I'm absolutely happy if there's any appetite of this council to advocate on that behalf to do something about that. I don't think that it's fair that park owners can simply refuse to sign forms, basically interfering with your ability to sell. There's no other real model where anybody can manage that legally. So I think that will should absolutely be closed. And happy to have further conversations on advocacy for that, absolutely. I think that's about all I have to say from here.
Counselor Moore, move on, Counselor Luceau.
Yeah, thank you. I think it's clear to me that the situation that Mr. Kotay is describing has been caused by a policy that this council adopted. Whilst the policy does have protections, if there is a redevelopment application, the situation that he is describing is happening in the interim. I'll note that our policy allows for partial redevelopment of any mobile home park or manufactured home park. So if six, six units get vacated and we move a few people in other places, we got a spot here, we can seek to change, seek to, the owner can apply for a partial redevelopment of that part there. If there are people not living on there, the protections are not going to apply as part of, we understand it. When this policy came forward, my recommendation to council was to refer it to, I think, Community Housing Society, Women's Shelter Society, Seniors Housing Society, other social agencies for review. That was not supported by council. I think that's a mistake. I've heard from Mr. Kotay, and we've just talked on the phone about some of the challenges he's facing. But he's not the only person facing these same challenges, the only resident of Revelstoke. The stories I hear are really heartbreaking. These are his neighbors who are facing multiple barriers. For example, can't sell their place, they got a job offer somewhere else, can't move to take that job. Really at the end of the rope to deal with it. And the remedy for them, when there is one, is costly, complicated, multiple. It takes resources, personal resources they may have, hiring lawyers or whatnot. So my feeling right now is council needs to take ownership. We, this is not provincial jurisdiction that caused this, although there is an interplay. It's our decision to have a policy that is redevelopment, you know, puts redevelopment in the title of this that has led to this situation, which I didn't anticipate. Like I didn't see this as being a possibility or something that would happen, which is why, you know, I put forward the recommendation to refer it to agencies to have a second look, to see what were happening here. So that would be my recommendation now. Now, I know Mr. Kotay forwarded a bunch of different policies and documents. They didn't make them on the agenda. I've seen some of them. I don't know if other council members have seen them. The Colona one, I was just looking at today, which seems to be a new one. I am certainly not an expert to be able to, you know, compare Langley's to other ones to know what is the right thing. I see a recommendation in Mr. Kotay's letter for adding wording. Typically, at a Committee of the Whole meeting, we won't be addressing a delegation and then making a recommendation right away. But I think it's incumbent on this council to do something to shore up this situation, because again and again and again, we're hearing that story. We took an action that is really, really impacting the residents, causing them to lose their capital, lose their funding, have to leave town, not have a viable option. And that's because of the changes that we made here. So I think it's really incumbent on this council to correct the errors we've made to deal with these situations. Unfortunately, at this point, I'm not ready to move forward with a policy recommendation. There's a lot to compare here and we need to see what will fit in with our existing policies as we go along. But I think the final point is this, this is on us. This is not the province. This is not something that's outside of our jurisdiction. We are a part of this and we need to take responsibility for this. So I'm looking to do that in the subsequent meetings and working with Mr. Kotay and others to right a wrong that I feel this council has created.
Counselor Luceau?
Thank you, Mayor Shills, and thank you for the presentation. As I'm one who also lives in a manufactured home, I understand the stresses that people can experience. I'm definitely in support of advocating for changes to the nineteen oh seven form and our TB ten form to help people with the sale of their manufactured homes. I am in agreeance with Counselor Cherry and Palmer that we, with this policy, although in the title does have redevelopment, I think we would only be talking about manufactured homes if they were coming to be redeveloped, so that's why that is in there. But the goal of that policy was not for redevelopment of trailer parks. It was for the conservation of below-market housing. So I'm also willing to entertain changing to the wordings for the unreasonable interference. But as it sits now, I am happy with the policy that we have, but always willing to work to improve it.
Great, appreciate it. Counselor Devlin?
Yeah, through the chair, I just have a clarifying question for Counselor Orlando. You stated that the situation that Mr. Kotay is in right now is because of our policy. Can you be more clear about specifically what part of our, like, as I understand it, the situation that he's describing is entirely based on the Mobile Home Tenancy Act at the provincial level and how it's not forcing them to sign forms that would allow them to mortgage? As of right now, I mean, there are, Mr. Kotay is bringing up there and valid points of potential issues that he might see down the road, but he's not describing a situation that's happening right now on a city level, as nobody's attempting to redevelop a manufactured home park right now. So I'm just kind of looking for some clarification about specifically what part of this field is on this, of this policy? Because from what I understand, we're talking about potential issues with this policy, not current issues.
I think that the challenges, the life trajectory altering challenges that residents of manufactured home parks are facing are not a hypothetical, not a potential. They're very real and happening right now. For example, as mentioned earlier, this policy allows for partial redevelopment. So if you got a one-acre parcel, you can carve off the corner and build an apartment building. If nobody is living there, then the protections mentioned in our policy are not going to apply to those people. So if I say, okay, what is it, what is within my powers as an owner of a mobile home park to move people along and create that opportunity for me? It is precisely engaging in these types of activities that would do it, because I know that with a new redevelopment policy that specifically allows partial redevelopment, that that could be a benefit for me in the future if I take this action and do that. Now, I don't want to paint everyone with the same, every owner with the same brush, that's not the case. But if that was somebody who decided that was the route they're going to take, that is an option available to them that was made available due to this policy change. And again, I would say, you know, encourage council to go out and hear some of the stories. Hear some, hear some of the stories from individuals who are impacted by this. I mean, I can't argue against. hear some, hear some of the stories from, from individuals who are impacted by this. I mean, I can't argue against, I cannot argue against. If, if somebody said to me in all honesty, uh, said, you know, Aaron defend the point that this was nothing to do with us, it's out of our hands, it's not our jurisdiction. That's it. And I would say that's wrong. That's totally false.
I'm, uh, uh, councillor Devlin, I'll let you respond and then I'll let councillor stick.
Uh, yeah, just a follow up question to the chair, to director Simon. Um, does this policy allow for partial redevelopment of trade park homes if nobody's living on the lot?
Through the chair to councillor Devlin, anyone can apply for any application that they so choose. We can't refuse an ability for an application to come in. If someone came in and wanted to submit an application for partial rezoning, it's very unlikely to be supportive. And there's no specific provisions in the policy that are seeking to enable that. And one comment as well, the policy does require the owners to give us a history of each pad, the condition of any mobile homes are in the pad. And if we have a mobile home park, anytime someone takes out a mobile home, they need demolition permit through us. So we have records on this. If we have fifty percent of the units that are gone and someone comes in and says, I want to apply to rezone and stratify, and oh yeah, fifty percent of the park is empty. And they can't give us legitimate rationale as to why it's empty, that will raise major, major red flags and will not see staff support for any type of rezoning in accordance with our policy.
Counselor Stirk first.
Yes, thank you. Um, through the chair, just, uh, a follow up question to councillor Orlando. As you sit as a council rep to Rebelstoke Community Housing Society, I'm wondering if, uh, if you're aware of any opportunities that have come up over the course of the last six years for, um, for the, for for the opportunity for RCHS to place a bid and purchase a mobile home park, essentially providing protection that you sort of see.
If opportunities.
Yes, are, are you aware of any market opportunities that have come up where you, where RCHS would have had the opportunity to buy mobile home park?
Um, number one, uh, Rebelstoke Community Housing Society is run by its own leadership board. I'm a rep to them. Um, and, um, so, I mean, really that's a question for them. Number two, uh, was an opportunity. Am I aware of an opportunity? Am I familiar?
So, so you're not, so you're not aware?
I'm not aware. And, and, and thirdly, um, with due respect, we're, we're changing the topic here. We're not, we're talking about an issue here. We're, 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 we're inching point of order. We're introducing a third party into a discussion, uh, casting that on the reputation, we're not even addressing.
I'm going to stop you both there. I think the point was made. We'll leave it alone. You don't, and with all due respect, councillor, uh, he is a council rep to that board. Um, and you asked about six years. He hasn't been on that board for the last six years. So, uh, I'm going to stop that sort of thing. I'm going to thank Mr. Cote for coming. You've definitely, uh, brought up some issues that council will have a discussion about in a subsequent meeting and I will talk to staff as to how I put that forward and bring that back. So thank you for your time and for bringing that forward to us because you've now, uh, you've got our ear and, and we'll look at what we can do. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on. So I'm going to go, uh, to, uh, staff reports. And, uh, Ms. Williams, you're here to talk about public engagement. And the leading scene or something. Oh, I did.
Thank you for that introduction. Hi, everyone.
Jessica. Okay.
Where do you want me?
He's going to move you so that people online can see.
Okay. Um, so I just wanted to touch base with you all about the community engagement event, uh, last week. So the aim of the emergency preparedness, community engagement event on May sixth was to inform. It was to inform residents of the city's emergency management operations, how external agencies such as the RCMP support those functions, crisis communications, how they themselves can prepare for emergencies ahead of time, and to raise awareness of our awesome emergency support services as part of Emergency Preparedness Week. So for that, promotion included, four social media posts, two newsletter inclusions, ten posters around town, one mail message, one inclusion in the seniors newsletter as a flyer. And I want to have a quick shout out to Lara Stovall for helping me with that one. One announcement at the crisis communication workshop for our tourism operators. One email from our friends over at Tourism Rebelstoke to their partners and a thanks to Tenille for sending that one. One inclusion in the Chamber of Commerce's calendar. Thanks to Caroline for suggesting that one. One radio advert on Summer FM. Two inclusions in our local newspapers as a result of the one media rela- release sent to local media and partners and subsequent newsflash sent out to our newsflash subscribers. All of that to say, as a result, we had forty nine attendees and a hundred and nine people watch, uh, via YouTube. More importantly, that led to four Via Smart assessments booked, three people signed up to emergency support services volunteer training. And I'm, I'm very excited about Alertable status. Um, I promise I'm not sponsored by them, but I do think it's really, really important that everybody is able to access emergency alerts. Um, and we had a hundred and eighty seven new subscribers to Alertable on May sixth alone, which was the day of the emergency preparedness event, which brings our total number of people in Rebelstoke and Area B now signed up for Alertable to four thousand one hundred and forty four.
Wow, that's awesome. And so the day after, everybody signed up, the phones went crazy because of the government doing their task. I have two phones and I think it went off four times.
That helped. That definitely helped promote Alertable to everybody for sure. Um, and just while I'm up here, I want to say that this wouldn't have been possible without a big team of supporters. And a real special shout out to David Moan, Stephen Derusi, Brenda Jones and Jay Morrison for the hours of work that they do behind the scenes that made the event what it was.
Thank you for that. We really appreciate it. It was good to see so many people out and interest and, uh, the conversations after the fact.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, so we now have, because we've started them and we've given the community a way of saying, hey, Rebelstoke's actually doing something when it comes to emergency preparedness. So kudos to all of you for that. I am grateful for that. So thank you again. Any, uh, council who want to make comment?
That's fine. Thank you, Mayor Sols. Uh, thank you for the presentation. It's good to have stats. It's a lot of prize.
I think.
One, uh, question that I have is on the, uh, and it might be out there already, but on the questions, there were some really good questions from the public and we see that we would be posting those online. I think we said we would do it sometime this week. I'm just sort of checking where, where we're at on that.
Through the chair to councillor Palmer. Thank you for keeping me accountable. That's still on my to do list. I do need to get that out.
And then, um, uh, again, a thank you to staff for doing this. I think this was a staff ribbon, uh, item. So it was good. Uh, it, uh, exposed some of our strengths, also exposed some weaknesses. And I think that was, I think that was heard there. So it's, it was very good discussion. I'm pleased with the discussion and gonna view it as a catalyst for continuous improvements going ahead.
Thank you.
Anyone else comments? Counselor Devlin?
Yeah, just through the chair. Uh, thank you. That's, that's basically it. I appreciate the update and it's good to see that we are making progress constantly in the, uh, public engagement, uh, round. It's been a little bit of a gripe for a lot of people for a long time. So it's nice to see that, uh, it's slowly changing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you again, Miss Williams. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming with all that information.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to departmental updates and, uh, Sergeant Devlin is here to do the third quarter of twenty twenty four and, uh, we'll possibly introduce some new staff. So, staffs are in the year up.
Well, thank you very much, Worship, uh, and council. Um, I apologize. I haven't been here. Uh, I missed my last. Uh, I had to re, uh, or reschedule, postpone my last, uh, date to do the fourth, uh, the fourth quarter year end report, uh, for us for twenty twenty four. So I'll start with that. Um, I, I tried, um, in vain to make a new PowerPoint. Uh, and, um, I should have, uh, got Francesca to assist me. But anyways, I did what I could. And then, uh, to be honest, it I actually was, had it done and then I lost it. So I had to do another one. So, uh, highly skilled technical person that I am. So, um, I, you all have, you were all probably provided the stats. I'm not going to bore you with, uh, a ton of, um, stats and go through the numbers. I think that's really, uh, uh, maybe, uh, you know, not that exciting. It's pretty static. I'll make a few comments about, um, the fourth quarter, which is basically the year end report from, um, from, um, twenty twenty four. Um, we were, we were up in quite a few different areas. Um, really nothing notable. Uh, we just continue to see a rise in our, in our stats, just kind of gradually since two thousand nineteen. And that's, um, that's probably our, since, really since two thousand twenty after COVID. So, um, it's, it's kind of probably, I'm only speculating. Um, I haven't done the research, but I'm only speculating that it's, uh, you know, it's a combination of our popularity, our tourism and, um, also just, uh, kind of things climbing back out of COVID times. So, um, uh, one of the notables we had, um, in twenty twenty four, we, we had, we were up in search and rescue calls. So probably, uh, you know, again, tourism, uh, popularity. Lot, uh, most of those calls are winter calls. So, um, uh, snowmobiling, uh, generally snowmobiling related, um, through SAR. Um, and other than that, it's pretty, pretty static. So I, I did, uh, I, this is my, my attempt at doing some, some cool graphs for you. Um, so I wanted to show, uh, this, uh, six, cause I, I was going to do five years, but I actually, uh, I thought, well, I'll throw in six too, because I wanted to do before two thousand, uh, twenty, before COVID. So, um, uh, it's just a municipal trend chart showing the gradual increase of our file, file, file volumes, uh, year over year. So, um, you can see we dipped, uh, we dipped down a bit, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, and then into twenty twenty one, where you can see that low, that seven, that seven oh eight dip there. Or, um, five thirteen, seven oh eight, sixty three. So, uh, municipally, we just kind of did a little dip because obviously there was the, all the, um, the, uh, things, um, restrictions as, uh, connected to COVID. And we've just been kind of gradually creeping up. Um, uh, depend, depends on, uh, um, provincial, uh, it, it kind of fluctuates from provincial and municipal, um, you know, numbers kind of fluctuate. So, um, but we're pretty static. You know, the numbers are so small that you, it's really not huge increases again. Um, when you look at the totals, uh, they're pretty, they're pretty gradual. Um, six year provincial averages, uh, just on, um, on the, sorry, on the provincial side, you can see, um, you can see all as well where we dipped and then we're just kind of slowly creeping up. But twenty twenty four, for instance, uh, uh, I'd like to point out was probably our busiest year since way back in, um, in twenty twenty. So, um, you especially with, uh, provincial volumes on the highways. Where, where the mainly, that's where we get most of our files, um, is on, on highway one. Going to the next slide. Um, I just wanted to highlight, uh, impaired driving enforcement that we do, uh, both within the municipality and, and on the provincial railways. Um, generally speaking, our general duty police officers that are part of the detachment, we focus obviously on impaired driving within the municipal area, um, because that's where all the watering holes are, generally speaking. So, um, uh, as you can see, you know, uh, it's, we're just still, uh, we're, we're creeping up with that enforcement, those driving, driving investigations. Um, hundred and thirteen within the municipality last year, um, thirty seven in the provincial area. And, uh, with one twenty seven, but it's pretty on par with twenty twenty two. Um, you can see it, some sort of a dip, uh. Uh, you know what? I might have a number wrong there on twenty twenty three on thirty seven. I think that's wrong. Uh, because it shouldn't have been that low. Um, and then total municipal traffic enforcement on the bottom there, you can see, uh, we're about, we hover around eight hundred, uh, eight hundred to nine hundred. Um, that's, that's, uh, that's in combination with DC highway patrol within the city, uh, within the city area. So that's, uh, I just combined both, those are both violation tickets and, uh, warnings that we, that we give out, um, when we're doing municipal traffic enforcement around. A lot of school zone stuff. Um, we do some cellphone stuff, distracted driving, um, seat belts, um, you know, that kind of stuff. So, uh, stop signs, that kind of stuff. So that's encompasses mostly about that. So we're out there doing that stuff. We're really focused on the school zones in the mornings during the school year. Um, and then, uh, you know, we try to get in, into the school zones in the afternoon. Um, but we'll, we always see our call volumes kind of creep, our start to, start to peak in the afternoon. Um, our, our busiest times are kind of between, you know, two, two PM and, and nine PM in the, so. So, uh, sometimes we don't get back into the school zones in the afternoon, but we really try. That's Derek's job to, uh, make sure that, that, that troops get back into there. Uh, going to the next slide there, um, I just, a real, just by the numbers, um, just some quick stats for you. Um, thirty nine fifty six, uh, total files in twenty twenty four. Uh, twenty six seventy five of those are municipal, twelve seventy eight are rural. So thirty two percent of our files are in the provincial area. Um, just wanted to throw it out there and point out, um, last year, now this has changed, but twelve point five percent of the GD members, uh, are funded provincially. So, um, bit of disparity there, thirty two percent, uh, file load, uh, and twelve and a half percent of the members are uh, being paid by the provincial province and the rest are being paid for, by the city. But, um, uh, we've, uh, we've mitigated a little bit of that by adding, uh, we were successful in adding a, uh, third provincially funded police officer, uh, just recently. So that's a really good, exciting news. And, um, uh, thanks to, to both your worship and Evan and, uh, others, uh, there's some, some, um, some talks and, and, uh, negotiations, et cetera, at UDCM and some through E-division in the province to try to bolster our provincial side, um, our provincial policing side. Um, there's only a finite amount of provincial police in the, in the province. It's like, uh, twenty three hundred or something like that. And they kind of move those pieces around to where they need those pieces to be. It's not like a municipality where if the municipality decides that they need, uh, if, say, Cranberg, or sorry, Cranberg, Rebelstoke, um, decides that instead of they want to fund fourteen, they could fund twenty because they want to, you know, uh, you know, a whole bunch of other, um, added, um, proactive policing or whatever. Um, it's easy, not easy, but you can make that decision. The province doesn't make those decisions on our current contract, the, the provincial contract. So they have to take a provincial body from somewhere else and move it to our, under our, uh, command. Um, so it's not as easy as it looks. So, but we're still working at trying to balance that disparity. So, um, I've just completed a, um, some more, uh, now work with, uh, our, uh, business systems um, in, uh, at E-division and they were providing a report, um, uh, to go up the chain to show that our numbers do reflect, uh, uh, our file count does reflect, uh, um, or support the fact that we need more, uh, some more provincial bodies on our provincial side. Um, don't want to take away from the municipal side because I think fourteen is pretty, uh, pretty good for, is a, is a good number for what we do here in, in the city. Um, but we want to bolster that other side. So, uh, that's called the staff prior, 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 prioritization project. Yeah, a lot of, um, it's a tongue twister. So, uh, and that's a provincial project where they had about two hundred and fifty, uh, positions that they were trying to redistribute across the province. Um, we have two provincial member, or three provincial members, as I, as I noted, fourteen municipal, total of seventeen, um, total, uh, general duty members at the detachment, uh, and the populations, you can see a seven twenty two in the provincial side and, uh, you know, eighty three hundred, eighty four, whatever the number is on a given date in the municipality. Um, uh, one thing I will say, when the province looks at numbers for, um, uh, for basically, um, uh, numbers of police officers in the rural provincial areas, they look at calls for service, but they look for, uh, criminal code charges. That's one of the things they base it on. And they look at population. So that's why I put that number in here. Seventy tw- seven twenty two is the provincial population of, of our police area, policing area. Um, and, uh, but that doesn't reflect on the calls for service that we get. Um, like, generally those calls for service are not coming from the people that live in that, those areas. It's coming from highway one and the volume that we see on highway one. So, um, but they don't, they have traditionally not taken those kind of calls, that type of, uh, information to account when they allot members to the provincial area. So, um, food for thought. We're still working on it and hopefully we'll get a couple more, a couple more down the road.
Well, we'll keep, uh, keep going up on this issue with McDonald's and moving along. Well, we'll keep, uh, keep having that conversation with McDonald's and moving along. And he and his colleagues were receptive last year, so that's why we had that extra member. So appreciate it, but we'll continue to have that conversation.
Absolutely, your worship, yeah. And, um, I think it's, uh, you know, hopefully we'll see some more fruits of that labor in the, in the, in the future. Um, just at the bottom there, uh, our performance planning, we're in that performance planning stage right now. So we're working on our, what our annual, uh, performance plans or our goals for, we're going to accomplish for this, this, uh, fiscal year, uh, the R C P fiscal year. So that's the twenty-five, twenty-six, starting now, we're in it now. So, um, um, we're continuing with traffic, the, this, the traffic safety stuff, speed enforcement, useful enforcement, also impaired driving, because we really think that that's one of the, one of the, you know, when we get, uh, a lot of our calls are traffic related and people, you know, making complaints about, um, specific things. So we want to keep the pressure on there. Um, we're going to keep, look, we're going to look, uh, continue to look at the theft remotes, um, in, uh, in, uh, we have some clusters of those that happen from time to time. And then, um, we're looking at our assault prevention and how we can partner with some local agents, you know, nonprofits and stuff to, to, uh, uh, work on how we can kind of, um, proactively, um, come combat, uh, uh, assaults. Cause we still continue to see those type of, um, you know, uh, domestic assaults, uh, assaults at the bars, that kind of stuff. So we want to try and mitigate that. Sometimes it's due to over service, sometimes it's just, um, people want to duke it out, you never know. So, uh, we're going to work with them and, uh, go from there. A couple other points, I think that's it for my slides on that one. Couple other points I wanted to, um, uh, bring up. Um, just on the staffing side, so, so, uh, we're currently running about seventy percent. And, uh, I can talk about members and allotted members and who's paying for them, but, um, we got to fill the seats. And, um, uh, we're still, uh, working diligently to replace and fill our vacancies. Um, we're at about seventy percent, like I say. Uh, two of those in fact are maternity leaves, so, um, they're ones that we can't backfill. We have to just, uh, absorb from basically. Um, but the other ones, we do have a current vacancy and then we do have three police officers that are rotating out here in, by June. And, but, uh, I've been lucky enough to, uh, be bringing in three new police officers. So one from Newfoundland, which will, uh, he'll, um, he's got five years service. He's going to, um, arrive here in early June. I have a new member coming from, uh, from Depot, um, so we'll be training another, uh, new member. And, um, he's coming out of Vancouver and, uh, we're excited to get him. And then it looks like we're, uh, likely to get a, um, a member out of Kelowna, West Kelowna for our third position, that's, uh, for the third member that's leaving in late, in late August. Wonderful. So I'm really working hard behind the scenes on the staffing side. Uh, we have a great staffing officer, um, that I've been working with, so, um, and we've already filled that provincial position that we added to our complement. So we added, uh, we, we filled that with a police officer out of Kelowna. So, uh, really working away at it and trying to keep our numbers up, uh, up good and get them ready for the winter season coming back. Um, in terms of our staff in our, uh, in our administrative side, I've been really lucky and I'd like to, uh, like, um, toot my own horn here, but we were able to, we had two public service, uh, employees, uh, vacancies. So both of those public service employees had moved on, one retired, Kathy retired. And, um, another moved on to a different, uh, different job, uh, outside of the force. So, uh, we were able to, um, recruit, uh, two new public service employees and they have both just, uh, been appointed, uh, here in the last, uh, two weeks. So, so we're back to where we need to be in our administrative side, uh, we were without for quite some time. And, um, we also added, uh, as council approved last year, we added a second halftime position, which has really helped. We're also working on some casuals, uh, to just bolster our numbers. So pretty positive stuff over in the, uh, in the brick barn over there. Um, uh, and that brings me to another, uh, well, two staffing things, uh, uh, additions. I don't know if I've, Derek's hasn't been available for the last time I was here, but he's been here about a year now. But I should really, uh, I should introduce him. Uh, Sergeant Derek Rondo, he's our, he replaced me as the operations, uh, non-commissioned officer. Uh, so Derek's role is to oversee the day-to-day operations, so the policing operations of, uh, of the detachment. So he came from Fernie. Well, I should let you explain. He previously was the detachment commander up north, so he's, uh, as a corporal, so, um, he's, uh, got, tell them about your service.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, uh, pretty happy to be here. Yeah, we've been here eleven months now, um, actually one of the P S Es that have filled the spot is my wife. So it was part of, part of the deal, yeah, we, we phoned ahead and, hey, you got work for two people? And, uh, Sergeant or Staff Sergeant Dodds at the time, time was very accommodating to that, so we're lucky to be here. Uh, we found a house, that was awesome. And, uh, yeah, we've been here now eleven months, uh, really liking it. Uh, I'd never say never doing what we do, but I don't see any plans of us, uh, heading out anytime soon or anything like that. No, no aspirations on the horizon to go on, we're, we're really settling in. I had bought my snowmobile seasons pass last year, used a whole bunch of it. And, uh, yeah, it was, it was a really good time. So, uh, we're just happy to be here. I feel like I've kind of got a foot in the detachment now and, uh, and if, uh, Staff Sergeant Dodds isn't around, you guys need to talk some more to the detachment. Basically his backfill, I, not as, uh, not as good with words as he is, but I try my best, I'm learning. Uh, and yeah, well, yeah, quickly about my service, yeah, I got seventeen years in now. Uh, this is our sixth posting, uh, five, four, four of the six posts have been in northern B C and then lost from this Fernie. And yeah, I ran a detachment in a little isolated post called Stewart, that bordered higher Alaska for three years, which was kind of a neat adventure. And I've worked in places, uh, biggest place I've worked was Prince George for four years as well. So varied experiences of small, medium and, uh, large detachments, so, yeah, fun.
Well, Derek, thank you, and, uh, we've met before, but I, uh, and on behalf of the city, welcome.
Thank you, your worship.
Appreciate you being here and, uh, welcome to your wife and councillor, Chair, uh, is wanting to say something. So just remember, if you take him out of here in bracelet, we're okay.
Perfect. They're right handy.
Uh, just a quick question to the chair, uh, are you planning to replace Ozzie on the ice for the next, uh, fire, fire first police?
I've got some pretty rusty hockey gear that I, uh, I, I shouldn't do it. I, uh, maybe I'll do it this, uh, this next year. I heard he's the goal scorer.
Yeah, Patrick?
Two years ago, I didn't, I, I didn't make this game this year, so.
Awesome, welcome, welcome to town.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments, councillor?
Uh, yeah, um, thank you for the presentation and, uh, yeah, thank you Derek for introducing yourself. And, uh, you're in the dream, um, community now, so, uh, no reason to go.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, thank you for the stats, in, in, interesting. I mean, it's sort of kind of the same going on and sort of a similar message. Uh, it's interesting, uh, that, you know, alcohol is still, drinking and driving is amazing that it's still a thing. Um, and, uh, just on that, so the impacts of alcohol. So I'm curious, because you mentioned assaults as well and often alcohol related. Would you say more often than not alcohol related or influenced?
Uh, well, it just, it's, in my experience, and, you know, I don't, you would have a deep, have to do a deep dive into the, um, sorry, worship, uh, to, to cancel the front, but, uh, um, the, uh, generally speaking, and Derek would back me up, most of the, most of, most, many and many of the assaults that we, uh, go to over the years have been alcohol related, generally speaking, yes. So both domestic and, you know, outside of the bar at three A M. type stuff. Um, yeah.
So, uh, through the chair, um, you know, something to think about, I'm not asking for any answers right now, but there are some things that we can do, including comments on liquor licenses and that kind of thing. And, uh, if there's anything that we as council through, either through policy or where liquor licenses are issued, um, you know, I, I think we'd all be open to hear that. And, uh, as to, uh, if, if there's some, um, going on to a different topic, yourselves, uh, the, interesting on, um, if I just take the stats the way they were showed, uh, and we're in tax season right now, so the subsidy of, you know, our citizens here is, Revelstoke taxpayers subsidizing provincial policing. Now, there's a caveat on that because the province subsidizes us, so it's, uh, we're subsidizing this world of bureaucracy that costs a lot of money. Um, I, but so that's sort of an interesting thing to see. And one of the things I was wondering, not really looking for an answer, but we've increased the, uh, full complement from, I think, twelve a few years ago up to fourteen now. And then did that proportionally change, or it was, did we make decisions that are actually more subsidizing? And I know there's resources, so I'm not actually asking, it's just sort of an academic question in my head. Uh, the one that I do have though is on national parks, including the highways, federal lands. It, it, does, does the feds, do they put any funds directly for those calls that are happening? Uh, including the highway on, uh, Parks Canada?
Uh, through the chair, I, uh, that's a great question. And I've had conversations with Parks about policing in the Parks zone. Um, they do have park wardens, uh, that do some of that work, but not generally speaking, uh, any general duty call would be directed to us, um, unless, uh, Parks can deal with it on their own. Um, it, years ago, Parks, uh, if I remember correctly, Parks used to fund, um, some R C M P police officers in, like, in the Banff, it kind of be, you know, in the Banff zones. Um, but it's, it's something that we, I, I certainly have looked at and we've had discussions about. Uh, it's way, way higher than my pay grade. Um, but I, the seventy thirty quotient for the, for the city, the funding for the municipality, um, I think that's partially federal as well. So, um, you know, that, that thirty percent is a, is, uh, partially federally, uh, federally funded through, through the, you know, the quotients that go from the federal to the, to the provincial down to us. So, um, I could get more information on that, but, uh, it, it's something that I have, I have looked into, no doubt. Yeah, to look where there would be other funding streams where we could, uh, we could add at least one or two members to, uh, assist us with, because a lot of our calls for service are in that zone. Yeah, especially traffic. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilor Cherry, your assistant.
Thanks, yourselves, uh, through to, sure, great title. Uh, Chief, Staff Sergeant?
Staff Sergeant.
Staff Sergeant, tops? Um, can you comment some of the? Sorry, can you comment some of the soft openings that you had to fill and what led to them? Or if that's too personal, uh, any comments on any issues with hiring that council should be aware of or that, uh, maybe we could help in the future, should there be an issue?
Uh, through the chair, so the, um, you know, one of our stumbling blocks is housing, of course. And, um, so we, we, we do have, we do have, um, there's lots of members that want to come here, but housing can be an issue. So we're, we are trying to work on that, um, you know, with the city and others to try and mitigate that. Um, uh, but most, most people usually find a way. And with the people that come out of Depot, they don't really have a choice. So they, but we really work hard behind the scenes to find, uh, a rental unit for somebody or we, we put the feelers out and, and, um, and also, uh, we've had a member stay, um, uh, short term in a lot of the city, city, uh, owned properties. So that, that's one of the, that's, that's usually, that's kind of pretty much the main one, to be honest. Um, a lot of people want to come here. Um, the, sorry, the other question was, the first question was, oh, the vacancies. So, so soft vacancies we can't fill, like they're, they're like the maternity leaves. We can't, we can't backfill those unless we go to a, um, we, we go surplus is what they call it. And, um, we would, uh, but it's a bit of a risk because when someone comes back, we have to transfer someone out to kind of balance the numbers or someone's on the hook for that extra cost for the member. Um, the hard vacancies where, you know, like we, we really worked to, uh, to fill those through lateral transfers. And then, uh, but we do have some, we do have one, actually two long-term, uh, sick, uh, uh, people off, long-term sick. And then after one year, we can look at going surplus on those positions as well.
Okay.
But, um, yeah, it's, it's, it's always a, a challenge. Um, we're always, we always typically run one to two vacancies anyway. Uh, just it, depending on sickness, transfers, um, you know, other unforeseen circumstances, et cetera. So we, we always run, you know, say the detachment is sixteen, we're, we're generally always around fourteen, just, just the way it is, so.
Okay, I appreciate all that. Uh, is there anything council could do to help you with any of this?
Uh, well, uh, like I say, uh, the housing thing is the one we're working on. So, um, it's, it's, uh, to me that if we can get, uh, you know, uh, some sort of, uh, option for members to, um, to look at for housing, that would be a, a huge, I think that would be a huge win. And, and I know the city's already, uh, see, uh, you know, have been helping us with that and it's on the radar.
Okay, I just have one follow-up, uh, to the chair. Um, attrition levels, how long do members usually stay around town? And you've been here long enough, maybe you just have a number off the top of your head? I mean, nobody's really, I don't see a lot of people putting in twenty-five year careers here.
Uh, well, it, it just depends, we're not, we're not a limited duration posting, so we don't have a time limit on this detachment. So, um, some detachments have a time limit, two, three, four, five years, um, then you have to go unless you get an extension. So we, um, uh, generally first, so people out of Depot are, are, uh, the policy generally is five years, your first posting is five years. Um, lateral transfers is, uh, generally three years minimum. And then, but, uh, that can be trumped if you get promoted. So if you get promoted out, um, say you're a const, you're a ten-year constable and you get a corporal's job in Vernon or something, um, and, uh, you've only been here a year or two, we can't do anything about that promotion. So, so that's kind of the general thing. Most members here since, in my, since I've been here is, uh, five to six years, you know, they, that's pretty good.
Yep. Yeah, sorry to catch up out of that just now.
No, it's fine, yeah.
Counselor Terrence?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. I have a, uh, just a quick note of appreciation for the officers that are, I see in the school zone. I really, I really enjoy seeing them there, especially in the morning when all the kids are biking to and from school. Uh, and then I have some follow-up questions in regards to traffic safety. Um, and then are we able to, to kind of narrow down the locations where we're seeing speeding and the collisions? Is it mostly on the highways, is it in, is it within the city core? Can you, can you be more specific with, with those locations? And maybe some recommendations, uh, that we could take to, uh, the P I C or the Public Infrastructure Meeting and, and look at how we're doing in the city as a whole for that?
Yeah, uh, your worship to the council nurse. Um, so, uh, we, we, our system, our prime system, um, we can, we can show clusters of stuff. So, uh, if we run a crime type or a, a type of file, so a traffic, uh, motor vehicle incident, we can show those clusters. Um, and if there's specific areas where there's, uh, where, where that heat, uh, you know, we have a heat cluster in certain areas, we'll often go to the city or if it's a provincial, we'll go to M O T I and we'll, we'll discuss with them, hey, like we're seeing, we've had fifteen, uh, motor vehicle incidents in this specific area in this timeframe. Obviously there's something wrong with the roadway profile or the signage or whatever, whatever it might be. So we'll, we'll make suggestions both to the city and to M O, I M O T I and that. To be perfectly honest, we, um, they, uh, off the top of my head, and I haven't done research on this, I don't have a specific motor vehicle, uh, collision, like a hotspot in town. They're, they're, they're pretty random all over town. Um, of course impaired driving, like, you know, where it's, Victoria is kind of, you know, a bit of a hunting ground, you know, like, I mean, that's the main thoroughfare and people are leaving the downtown core and going places, so Victoria, you know, for impaired driving. If you clustered that, you would see that for sure. Yeah. And then we do have some specific ones, uh, here and there on the, on number one, uh, more up towards, uh, you know, Albert Canyon and that, where we see, uh, typically, uh, it's the road profile and, and a high speed in, in a bad spot where they, where we generally see, uh, you know, vehicles go off road. So, but we, we certainly look at those things. And if I see a cluster, like I, I'm, I'm knee-deep in stats all the time looking at things. And, um, it's crazy how, how consistent they are year over year. Yeah. It's amazing, you know, that's, I'm a bit of a geek that way, sorry.
I'm thinking back to the nineties when I was involved in it, it's like, add alcohol exchange, right? Add alcohol, just an idiot, that's what we think, outside the bar. So when you're talking about clusters, if you could look in my neighborhood, so I have a So when you're talking about clusters, if you could look in my neighborhood, so I have a cluster of people going up and down my street, driving an orange bike, driving his kids up and down. He goes so many times a day, it's like a cluster. You investigate that. All right. Thank you so much. Something else?
Your worship, I'd just like to uh, uh, if there's no other questions, I'd like to introduce our
Sure, yeah, just a couple unrelated questions. Thanks uh, for filling us in on staffing, uh, the ability to bring more staff in, that's great. It's always been a challenge here. Um, I wanted to look at projecting forward uh, and uh, get some feedback on what the picture looks like. One of the things I've heard, and I don't know how this will impact us, is that the police transition in Surrey will free up some officers and I assume that's gonna have a run-on effect, uh, moving people around to some extent. Um, moving forward uh, with budgeting from the city, we just had a budget, reviewed a budget document yesterday and we went over because we had prudently, you know, budgeted for where we thought the staffing would be, but it's a little bit uh, over. Where do you think we're going to be uh, uh, moving forward on staffing levels? Do you think we're going to be able to hit our, hit our targets? What, what would you think?
Uh, your worship to councillor Orlando, I, sorry, I just want to clarify your question. So in terms of filling the positions or in terms of adding positions in the future municipally?
Just fill, filling the, the uh, our number of positions uh, that we were projecting, because we are, I think we're budgeting under just because that had been traditional.
Yeah, um, so like I say, we generally always run at least one vacancy, um, just with the turnover and and um, long-term sick leave. And long-term sick leave doesn't come out of the municipal budget, so they go on to a different collater, different budget, that's under E-division. So um, they, they, when someone's off thirty days or more, they get removed off of our budget, off of your budget. Um, um, the, the city isn't built for that. So um, you know, that's one savings there and um, you know, again, the, the constant, or not constant, but the, the turnover of members, um, it's really hard, it's really hard to forecast. Um, cause like I say, uh, people can get promoted, uh, other things can happen. Um, so it's really hard to forecast, but I, I, I do understand that, you know, there's a there's a budget and then there's a budget, you know, and then uh, and we cost money, I get it. Um, uh, I've kind of, you know, I've said it before, like, my goal, my goal is to be fully staffed. I'm, I'm not gonna lie, like, that, that makes my schedule look better. Uh, I can, we can do more proactive policing, do more community policing. Um, uh, we can attend more events, we can have more people on the road after our close, like all that stuff. Um, so my goal is always to have a full bench, but um, it's not generally realistic when we have all of these other factors at play. Yeah, so um, going forward, you know, as the population increases, as um, you know, we have more permanent residents or we see like, I used to work in Whistler and, you know, we'd go from eighteen thousand people on a Tuesday to fifty thousand on a Friday night, you know, so um, those, we have to balance that in a policing, we have to balance that policing too. But, you know, currently our calls for service don't, in my opinion, in the municipal side, don't uh, call for um, you know, additions to our bench strength currently, right, right now.
And uh, through the church, another unrelated questions. In terms of the uh, statistics that we're seeing, are there any emerging trends or reemerging trends or any other um, issues that um, you, that the city can help with, be it through communication or planning or changes or long-term planning that you're seeing?
Through the chair, uh, that's a good question. Um, you know, there's nothing, like, like I said, in our statistics, there's uh, you know, all our numbers, there's nothing that's really jumping out at me currently, you know, um, yes, we could do more in certain areas to, you know, like such as impaired driving, but I, we're already, you know, I compare ourselves to other detachments in the area, we're already, you know, we're, we're leaders in that. I have some really motivated members that are all over it. Um, and, but otherwise, um, yeah, I, 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 I'm sorry, I can't think of anything left. Of course, of course, we would, if we saw, start to see a trend, something trending up, we would have to certainly apply um, resources or or methods to those things. Unless Derek has anything that jumps out to him, but uh.
That's great. Thank you.
Ms. Moore, did you want to add anything regarding budgeting? In relation to the question, councillor Orlando.
Uh, through the chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to note that there is no specific target. Um, and that the city budget's based off of historical vacancy rates so that we're not overtaxing the community, um, assuming that we'll have the full fourteen authorized personnel year round when um, it's just not the case and that's not feasible. So at no point are we having discussions with the RCMP about hitting a specific target. Um, we encourage them to hire um, as much as they can and um, continue um, within their needs.
Thank you for that introductions.
Thanks, your worship. So uh, without further ado, uh, Lisa Timmerich has just recently joined us uh, as our new victim services coordinator slash worker. So um, she comes to us with a really cool background and we're super lucky to have her join our team. Um, and she's been working very diligently since coming on board to get herself up to speed, do all the required uh, training, uh, provincial training. Uh, she's already gone to a symposium, um, training session last week. So I'll let her give you a little uh, um, background and I'll just remove myself here because I'll let her have the, have the, have the uh, fore.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So yeah, I've just been in post for almost two months now, but um, my background is within the UK in the police. I was a police officer in Brighton in England. Uh, twelve years in the police, had five years on the anti-victimization unit, specialized in LGBT hate crime, domestic violence. And then when I went on to the response team, I, as well as responding, specialized as a sexual offense liaison officer and advanced interviewer for children and young vulnerable adults. Um, so quite a bit of experience there. And then I moved to Canada, I think twelve, thirteen years ago. So I've been in Revelstoke for at least eleven, twelve years now. And my most recent job was a, an early childhood educator. Um, so a little bit of a change, but I definitely miss this kind of area of work, so I'm happy to be back in this role and, well, not back in this role, but in this role. Um, and as thousands odd said, I've done my training, I've been just kind of trying to get a grip with how things are different here compared to England and specifically the court processes, et cetera, and um, getting to know some of the local community organizations. Um, a little bit about my role, I don't know if everyone is fully aware of victim services, but um, it starts right from the initial crisis intervention, so attendance of scenes, I can get called out. Um, right through to emotional support, referring out to different agencies to support. And then following through with the police file updating if there's any updates that they need throughout the investigation. And then if things go to court, then I can do court orientations and accompany people to court and explain those systems as well, so.
Great, well, welcome. We're super glad to have you on board and great that you've got that experience, so happy to see you here. Council, any comments or questions? Welcome.
Thanks for introducing, it's good to know.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thanks again. Good luck and enjoy.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, we are going to move on to uh, departmental updates. And who wants to go first, parks or development? Mr. Now, you want to be your parks first in case we get uh, you know, many questions for our development services now that you practice leaps.
Yeah, that'll be ongoing. Okay, uh, so thank you. So the first quarter will be uh, January to March. So during this time, we had a lot of different things go on with the community center. We had a lot of um, large community events. And new to the community center was this year's hospice bingo night, which was a huge success. And we're hoping that they will have a couple more functions throughout the year in the center. Um, on the children's program, we had some really neat programs for the kids. We had Lego robotics and the first Lego league and the first League Lego league, a little bit of a tongue twister. Um, they participated in an out-of-town competition and several of them won different awards and one team actually qualified for the provincial championship in Maple Ridge.
Wow.
So that was quite exciting for them. Um, our sewing club for youth is also very popular and seems to be running all year round now, which is really exciting. Um, on the aquatic front, we were able to sustain our regular operating hours and we had a number of private pool rentals for different organizations in town. We also started running some higher level aquatic programs. Um, one of them was the bronze medallion where we had six participants and this is just one of three courses required, has a prerequisite to the National Lifeguard program. So we're starting to introduce those courses. We've also ran an emergency first aid for youth. Um, we partnered with the Stoke Youth Network and we were able to sponsor some kids in that program as well through the Youth Access Fund. And we had a total of eleven participants there. And then we ran our two popular um, swims, the New Year's Day swim and the annual Family Day swim. So we had a couple hundred people um, in attendance for those events. The arena was really busy this quarter with various events, a lot of tournaments. Um, we had the co- co- Kodiaks women's hockey tournament, the Grizzlies held um, multiple playoff games in the facility, the annual skating carnival, as well as the firefighters and RCMP charity hockey game. Um, the ice hours booked for twenty twenty-five exceeded the twenty twenty-four, so we're seeing more usage in the facility. And um, spoiler alert, last February, I installed a people counter in the facility as well. And um, so I'm able to generate some good trap, good data on the arena traffic. Um, so you'll see that new graph there, which is something you haven't seen before. So the counter was installed last February, so has of February twenty twenty-four, I've been able to track numbers. So basically the counter tracks the in and out of the front door and it can uh, just differentiate between children and adults as well. So I can break it down to that level. Um, the one thing I will say is that the numbers are somewhat misleading because the same person can go in and out four or five times and it counts as an entry into the facility. But it still goes to show the number of traffic that we're having in the facility. So the wear and tear, the use of the public washrooms, the, all that kind of stuff, we can capture that data. So you'll see like in February and March, we have over twenty thousand visits per month to the facility, which is quite a high number. And even if we reduce that by fifty percent, it's still ten thousand visits, which is quite significant. Um, the tracking system allows me to track entrance on every hour as well. So I can, I can see where the busy points are, where the slow times are. Um, it's quite interesting. And then uh, parks, we had parks crew out in March. We had an early spring this year. So we deployed parks staff out to start the spring cleanup. And then with some special events this winter, we had the popular winter carnival return. Again, with exciting events, outhouse races, rail jam and entertainment. And then we had um, other large events, the LFI winter market was held at the community center throughout the winter. We had the coldest night of the year and then we had a touch a truck event held during spring break for youth where we had a large, um, we had a number of heavy equipment displayed into the rec. Central parking lot and then the youth would circle around and get orientated on the equipment.
That's great.
And that's all of it.
Thank you. Mr. Now, any comments or questions from councilor?
Thanks for us. Uh, just quickly, in the pie chart, what was the green section for?
The green section was, I believe, meeting rooms.
Okay.
So that would be the boulder and McPherson room.
I appreciate that. Thanks for all this as well.
That's wonderful. Uh, thank you, Mayor Solace. Thanks, uh, Mr. Now on the report. Nation, uh, in the past, we've had some challenges with retaining uh, lifeguards and pool hours. It seems we have more pool hours now. I think there was some budget adjustment. Uh, but sort of the status of having employees, it seems, it seems better. It has, it feels like it's better.
Yeah, our stats were a little bit lower in terms of patron visits this winter. But it's really our climate and the skiing conditions have a lot to do with our patron counts in the wintertime as well. The budget changes we made were to commence in the fall, in the late fall. So in November, we bumped up our budget allocation to expand operating hours during that November till the end of April season. So we'll see that come forward. Um, I am going to try to have some pop-up swims this summer, similar to what we did last year, where we have pop-up swims on a Sunday. Um, so we'll try to do that again. Depending on the climate as well, just preparing for smoke or that type of thing.
Um, and just to follow up to that, I think you preempted me on the Sunday swims, that's one of the comments. Other early morning swims, which has been fleshed out nicely right now. Uh, so that's one inquiry and I think these are sort of the regular locals that are like to see the uh, early morning. So it's good to see that. May not be big revenue generators, but it's a public service. And then the Sunday, so to maybe just review what the budget provision is for Sundays. I don't think we have the budget provision for full-on Sundays at this point, but this pop-up is maybe a good news thing.
All right, any questions? Councilor.
Um, uh, yeah, just through the church, I was by the new pump track um, a few days ago, uh, just uh, something company.
Oh, yeah. It's not on this quarterly report, but yeah, so we um, were able to bump up the pump track project to a spring build. We were scheduled for the, for the fall. However, Vella Solutions did have a cancellation in their schedule, so they reached out to see if we could accommodate a spring build, which we were able to do. Uh, they started that a few weeks ago and they are on track with the schedule. Uh, this week was uh, a full three days of asphalt, so you would have seen a lot of the paving happening on site. Uh, Francesca and I were there this morning taking pictures and it looks awesome. Um, yeah, we're hoping that the project should be ready for an opening in mid-June. That's what we're shooting for. Um, yeah, so far everything's on budget, on schedule, looking great. Weather's been cooperating. Um, yeah.
Fantastic. Thanks so much.
Awesome. Thanks again, Mr. Now. All right, Mr. Simon. Quarterly report, quarter one, departmental stats. One plus one equals two billion permits.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you for that update. We're done.
Your worship, uh, council, we're happy to give uh, an update. If you guys would like Mr. Gips to come up to the podium. Otherwise, we are happy to answer any questions.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll have a, an update. Mr. Gips can come to the podium and and uh, councillor Chair got excited about that, so.
And to your worship, I will mention as Mr. Gips is going up that he has been spearheading, taking the lead on getting these stats as per council direction. So it's very much appreciated within the department for him taking the lead on this.
Perfect, thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Uh, high level, just so uh, everybody's aware on this, uh, essentially no major surprise as far as stats so far this year. Building permits have started off a little bit slow in comparison to previous years, but that is to be expected with the current building climate, we'll say, and political climate. Uh, overall, uh, we did see forty-four new licenses, uh, business licenses as well within the first quarter here. And then uh, based on the feedback we received from council on the last reporting we provided, in the last page there, we did provide a more detailed breakdown on what offenses we were issuing the specific tickets under for the bylaw enforcement portion of it. I know council were a little more curious to kind of see if there was trends where we were issuing very specific types of uh, uh, offense notices. One thing I would like to point out, just so there's a little clarity, one of the items in there is actually this, this summary is based on the total number uh, or the total MTIs and bylaw and for, bylaw offense notices issued within the city for uh, Q1. One of the, the uh, participate in physical confrontation was actually one of the ones that was issued by the RCMP as identified within their quarterly reports as well. So just want you to know, we're not out there breaking up fights, that is with the RCMP, but because it is a municipal ticket, they include it under, under our bylaw. But because it is a municipal ticket, they include it under our bylaws. It does track under our total number of MTIs and by law for and by law offense notices issued for the municipality. So I'll open it up if there's any specific questions, council would like to go other way.
Through the chair.
I'd love Stephen Harris to go first, if that's okay.
Okay, Councilor Chair.
I'd love it if Councilor Chair went first, but I'll. In regards to the building permits being issued, when I look at the number of commercial industrial building permits, can you better define how how we are defining commercial building permits? So i.e. in property management, anything above that, or property financing, anything above a five unit apartment building is considered a commercial? What is the city's definition of commercial? Is it strictly ICI or?
Through the worship, your worship to Councilor Stephen Harris, yes, it's ICI. So we're not looking at anything relating to the residential portion. When we say residential, we're talking residential in broad, so that would, bless you. That would be single families, duplexes, multifamilies, apartments, anything along those lines. ICI, for those who aren't familiar, we're talking about mainly the commercial buildings themselves, right? So hotel operations, tenant improvement permits. Predominant number that we receive end up being on those tenant improvements. So taking an existing commercial space, whether it be an open bay. So traditionally, we'd see up at McKenzie Village before any of the tenants had moved in and renovating that to meet the needs of the specific tenant or taking an existing commercial space from downtown and renovating that to meet the needs of a new business. So changing use things along those lines.
Great, perfect, thank you for that. And just a quick follow up in regards to residential. It's great to see, well, not so great to see see the dip in building permits being issued. But maybe just getting into the weeds a little bit more on this as to what kind of what kind of building permits are we seeing? Are we seeing, you know, again, the duplexes, the triplexes, the fourplexes? Or are we seeing more single family? And then that way, we can maybe have a better track of, you know, our housing goal and where are we at? What was being accomplished? So that's a follow up, but thank you so much for the information, it's great to see.
Councilor Chair. You ready?
Yeah, sure, through the chair, to Mr. Gips. Q one twenty twenty four versus Q one twenty twenty five, how are we looking? And hoping you can have a bit of a crystal ball for the rest of the year.
Through your worship, Councilor Cherry. Hard to have a bit of a crystal ball this year. If we were talking historical years, it'd be a little bit easier this year. We are seeing a little bit of a quieter trend off the bat. We have seen a reduction into Q one of twenty twenty five in comparison to twenty twenty four. That is honestly kind of to be expected right now. We have had some people reaching out to us to say that they are holding off on some of their projects just with the uncertainty with costs of construction in relation to tariffs and other additional inflationary costs. It it's it's hard to say exactly where we're going to end up this year. We are expecting it to be a little bit of a quieter development this year, requirement, quieter development year for this year. We are still seeing duplex with suites being the kind of the prominent application type we are receiving with single families kind of following shortly behind. And then row homes being, again, that that other, the missing piece that we are seeing more of. But, yeah, at this point, it is really difficult to have that crystal ball to say where we're going to end this year with the development overall. But we are preparing for a little bit of a quieter year this in comparison to twenty twenty four.
Okay, I appreciate that. Go, my next question is regarding by law stats. Have we seen a downtrend in STR issues?
Through your worship, Councilor Cherry, I wouldn't say we have seen necessarily a downtrend. We have, we are focusing, right now, we do have one on by law officer who is predominantly focusing on STRs. And currently, we are pursuing some of our larger files. So some of the the repeat offenders who don't, they they kind of see these by law fence notices as a little bit more of a, we'll say, cost of doing business. So we are currently spending a little bit more resources on building those cases to be able to take for a long form information versus just using the traditional ticketing methods. So I would say overall, the trends have been fairly consistent. Our by law enforcement officer, who's been focused on that one, predominantly on the the short term rental topic, he has seen a decrease in the number of noncompliant listings, thanks to the provincial portal. And then the the new regulations that came into effect for the province requiring the registration through their registry as well. So we have seen a decrease in that portion of it, where there's less offenses on advertising without a license or just essentially, it was illegal ones, they are a little bit harder to find. They're not as readily available as we've predominantly seen in history, where you just go on Airbnb or VRVO and you'd be able to kind of pick and choose and check to see which ones were actually licensed. Now, with that new licensing or registry and listing requirements, it is a little bit more difficult for the identification because you are going through a lot more, manually going through a lot more of those smaller listing platforms, the kind of the specialty niche ones. So we will see a little bit of a reduction in the stats overall for twenty twenty five relating to STR enforcement. But again, that is partially to do with the the provincial regulations as well as because we are pursuing some of our larger offenders.
Perfect, thanks a lot for that info.
Anyone else have questions? If you scroll in on a ticket notice summary, you have a new employee there. Max's cousin Rex is sitting in the car. So it's a bit doggone to advise.
I think the council would appreciate that one.
Thanks for that. Anything else? I really appreciate you coming with us. It gives us a bit of an understanding of what's going on, especially when we're talking about the downgrade or less building going on, I think, with the tariffs and. But we are still seeing building better than some other communities. So we're grateful for that. Any other comments? So you got, thanks a lot, appreciate. Anything else, Mr. Simon, you want to add?
Your worship, no.
Okay, thank you, thank you. All right, we are now going to ask to go in camera for some of the sections. Point one G and K of the community chart. All in favor? It's carried, we'll take a few minute break and come back and.